Five thirty, and I'm going to call the Monday, November sixth, 2017, selectmen's meeting to order. We're going to be discussing goals for the new town administrator, which is David Demontch, between now and then at six o'clock, we have executive session. And then, under the consent agenda, we have discuss town offices and transfer station business hours for the day after Thanksgiving, discussion regarding credit cards, discuss and approve all the snow contracts for 2017-18, review and consideration of October nineteenth, 2017, open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins. Discuss and approve town website as official posting location for meeting notices in public hearings in accordance with the new open meeting law, and approve Board of Selectmen's minutes from October sixteenth, nineteenth, twenty-third, and November second. Sign contract for the purchase of police cruiser tablets, and sign the southeastern regional planning and economic development district open space plan contract. Review the town administration's report, and then there's several things under personnel. I think we need to give Charlie some more work, because every time I see Board of Health and nothing underneath it.
Just the way it is, I guess.
Okay, so, we tried to do, I think it's important for us to do the performance.
Anybody recording?
Anybody?
Anybody recording?
Free Jim, thank you.
And town free town.
Sorry. That's, that's why you have that.
That's why.
Always for you. And, God, we don't need another open meeting law violation.
We get enough of those.
So, we have a new town administrator, and it's really important for us, the Board of Selectmen, to set goals as he goes along, and then that would set up an evaluation for him within six months of his hiring. We tried to do that before, but you weren't able to be there, and I thought it was important that we set goals as a board. And I know, the last time we met, it was Charlie and I. Charlie, do you want to just go over some of the goals that you had for him?
Well, my first goal would be to set up a employee evaluation program, both for he in the board, for department heads, and then to have it trickle down through department heads to the departments. I think a pass of legal matter may have been able to, been resolved with performance evaluations at the time that the person was here. And I think it's just a good thing that we have it. We haven't been, we're a lot, kind of lacks with, I know lots of people, lots of communities and businesses lacks, they really lack. Kind of what I would like to see is, not like a grade, but maybe like three or four points, no more than half a dozen, where, okay, this is what, you have a standard, neither they need or they don't. Not a complex, not a scoring. I know personally, I'm a high scorer in such things.
I've always said that about you.
You know, and so on Ice Street. So, that would be a goal that I would like to see David be able to develop, especially, I'd say by the end of June, my personal.
Or at least set up the tool for it.
Right, exactly.
And then maybe we start that with the new fiscal year.
Exactly, that was my point.
Okay. Also, I think alongside that would be specific job descriptions, because some of our, like, the Board of Health doesn't have a job description. You know, we keep throwing all this stuff at him, and that kind of, we talked about it a little bit, but we need to make sure that all the employees or the department heads have specific job descriptions. So then, when we do the performance evaluations of them, then it's clear and concise. You know what I mean? So, it's not arbitrary.
Especially like assistants, you know, we have assistant treasurer, we have assistant town clerk. Make sure they're performing to what their department head is expecting them, and they would be able to fill in if they need to. Also, Board of Health, you brought Board of Health the...
The bylaw?
No, transfer station. I don't get a specific job description for the assistant in the transfer station. Again, back to the assistant. Most of the department heads have them, but the assistants don't.
Right. Robbie?
I put a couple of things down, some of them more long-term, some of them are shorter term. One thing I'd like to see, we've discussed it in the past, is streetlights. See if there's any grants available for changing over our current streetlights to LED, and/or adding some more streetlights. I've heard residents that used to have streetlights in the past, that, you know, if available, they'd like to have streetlights back again, especially some of the units of sections. Also like to have, rather, a synopsis around in-town personnel contracts. We're coming back in the negotiation season, it would be nice to know what other towns are paying, and what benefits they have, and what's working and not working. And we don't want to fall into a trap, that's a common trap that all the towns have, that isn't working. Follow-up on the Free Town Screw site. Jeff Healy had been working on getting a fifty-five and over establishment up there. The plan board's currently working on some bylaw changes, suggested bylaw changes that would allow, or entice more, a business to come in, or a contract to come in into a fifty-five and over, or maybe a forty-B. Currently, we're at two point five percent of the, of our population, our housing is at forty-B level, which opens us up to a contract coming in and putting in a forty-B against, you know, outside of the zoning, having special, not even bylaws, have special building permits issued to him. So, if we get that up to ten percent, that wouldn't be, they wouldn't have the access, ability to do that. So, fifty-five and over forty-B would be a great tool for that. Which Jack had already started working on that for the Free Town Screw site.
I'll let that go, but it's kind of been off the front burner, put to the back.
Put to the back burner, right.
It's great to be bringing that forward.
And we have a lot of older people that are, you know, they're empty nesters, maybe a husband or a wife has passed on, and the tax burden is becoming daunting. But they'd love to stay in town, but they just can't afford to. So, this would be something that maybe they could move, sell their, the house they're in now, and, you know, move into a, stay in town into a fifty-five and over community, and be in the town they've been in for forty, fifty years. And the other thing is just the ambiguous, explore new sources of revenue for the town.
All right, so, on mine, I have a review and update the IT policy. We haven't had a review of that since, I think, 2007, so I think it's almost, it needs to be reviewed and updated. Also, along with that, a three-year plan, so we know where we're going with our computer system, and, you know, what else we need to do to secure, that we have a three-year plan done. Same thing, I wrote contracts, comparison of all union contracts with neighboring communities, and get us prepared to look into that. That would also include health insurance, and where we are with that, and, you know, just make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. I think that that's something that we should probably look at. Job description of all department heads, like we already talked about. Also with the grants, not only LED for lighting, but also sewer. I think that, I think we've all, the three of us have really talked about extending that sewer line all the way down, and I think that if we can get a grant for that, or look into a grant, then we'll be ready for the June town meeting to bring that forward. And I think that that would be huge and beneficial for that, that street to get some, you know, good businesses down there. So, I would add sewer alongside of the lighting. And also, I know that he started the financial management team, and it includes, you know, I'd like to know updates on how that's working, but I also think he should include the assessors, or at least either one of the assessors, the chair of the assessors, assistant assess, I don't know. But I think that, you know, it all starts in that office, on where we're going, and if they're not part of the financial management team, then they're second guessing. I think that having that person be part of the financial management team is needed. So, I think that that's good for him for the first six months.
Yeah, it's a big law.
And then, so, we'll have Tim write that out for us?
Yes.
All right, and as a personnel chair, do you want to sit down and review that with him?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. I would have him sign it, and you sign it, and then...
Yep.
And then, at least, so, just remember, though, in six months, we'll have a review for him as well.
And there's some duplicity there, like yours and Charlie's, mine, one of mine and one of yours, so...
So, he'll, when Tim does it, he'll just, he won't say who it's coming from, he'll just say, "From the board," and then we'll go from there. He's not going to get all of this done.
No, no.
But I mean...
Some of these are just long-term goals.
Right.
They're not necessarily short. The contracts will, that's short-term, yes. The Free Town Screw site's been going on for four years, if it's going to go on longer. The LEDs, that's, the other thing, though, with the LEDs is the town buildings. You know, a lot of them have been turned over to fluorescent, but even the fluorescents have a shorter lifespan than the new LEDs, and they were given, the state was giving them through Mass Save, I think it was, upgrade grants for that, so. But yes, I would absolutely be happy to sit down with him and go over his goals.
Is there solar, too?
Solar's, it's been changing. It changed last year in January, and this year it's going to change again. What Charlie Baker's going to come up with, we don't necessarily know yet.
All right, and the other thing about solar that I'm just thinking about that is that we really need to look at the pilots, because we have zero pilots, and we're getting all of our solar arrays through taxation.
Right.
And that's going to change, and if we don't get anything through taxation, we don't get anything. So, we need to change that over to pilots.
You might want to put that on, right on the, as a goal.
So, that's, that's a major goal, okay? All right. All right, so...
Is he coming to this meeting?
No. He knew that we were going to work on this, and he's coming in five minutes.
Oh, he is coming in six.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, he's coming. So, anyway, we're done with that part of it. Are you guys good? Do you want to vote on that, or?
If you want to make a motion to have me sit down with him, we're going to know if we need that in a motion, but...
I don't know, it'll kind of clean it all up, but we, so, I'll make a motion that, after Tim writes this all down and formulates this, that Robbie Bobby checks it over and sits down with the town administrator.
Motion being seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
All right. So, we have a little bit of time before executive session. Hi, bright light over there. Anybody have anything for the Board of Selectmen for public discussion? Nothing?
Nothing really. Unless you could have Chuckie back on the sweet Ridge Hill Road.
Tim, can we, uh?
Yep.
Thank you. We can just ask?
I don't know.
Did you hear about my tires?
No. No, but I got one, too, and I was going to go down the town all its throats, where the wind, but I said, "Be nice about it, just plug it."
It's on camera.
Did you have anything?
I do have another thing.
What?
Could you, is there, I don't know if there's any way, there's a trailer truck that hauls cars to XL. You know, one of the big ones that the sides open?
Yeah.
Well, the guy's coming through the four corners all the time. Can you change, can you change his route that he has to go?
Where you going?
If he can't make that turn, he's, he's in the lane to go straight up North Main Street, and he has to wait, and he sits there waiting for everybody to come out of seventy-nine so that he can make the turn, because he has to go all the way over to the sidewalk on the other side to make the turn, because it's too big of a trailer. I don't see how that's legal.
It's a state way, though. Yeah, it's a public way. You can't really restrict, there's no weight restrictions on either bridge anymore, so...
It's just going to be one of the things, one, someone can't move, then, uh...
We are sure we can ask the chief to have heavier enforcement, and that area track violation enforcement, but stopping them, somebody from using the road and...
No, I didn't say stop them, I just...
No, I know, rerouting them.
I know, when, when town takes its sewers, the dump, they have a certain route they have to go. They can't just go through the center of town with them.
Maybe we could ID the truck and speed.
See, he goes right up this way every day.
Well, should have all his markings on it, so...
I'm just talking, I mean, it's long, there's no way to be, he's in the, he's in the lane to go straight up North Main Street, you know, you put those new arrows in. Well, he's out there in the middle of a thing like this and everything, and he stops there, and he's telling everybody else to go before, because he can't, he can't make the turn. But I just didn't know what, I know, like I said, I know they give us separate routes, special routes to travel, so I don't know if they could do that with him.
But the city is doing that to you, you know? But, yeah, we'll try to...
Best to do a track, get, you know, his markings. Clayton or something, see if we can get the person to use the highways.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything else for the board for public discussion?
I just thought I'd say something.
Yes?
A week or two ago, somebody ran into the back of the building, I'm sure you're aware. Now, you know those posts we have around the ramps? Would it be possible to put them between, along the back, to help protect the building?
Yes, as soon as David sits down, I'll, we'll discuss that with him.
Okay, well, you got to start something.
Absolutely.
I think that's mistaken, or any public entrance has to be a crash barrier, don't you? And it doesn't have to be anything, it could just be a pole, like a cement pole, reinforced pole, and it's in place so a car can't...
What about concrete?
Barrier, Jersey barrier?
Yeah, Jersey barrier.
Then it'd be kind of cumbersome, this would just be a pole, it's kind of like...
Oh, if somebody gets out of the vehicle, they can walk around the pole, but come in either way, or even a wheelchair, or just, so somebody doesn't hit the building.
Yeah, you stay in front of stores a lot, so it doesn't...
Yeah, Target has those, from...
Is that what you're looking for?
So, they were asking, because how the back of the building got hit, if we could put something in front of the building, so nobody, nobody hits it anymore.
Piling, or?
Yeah, pile.
Pole, kind of thing?
Yeah.
I was thinking a pole similar to what we have around both of the ramps, if we had four or five doors, like right in front of handicap parking, as an example. Like I say, so you can walk around, you don't want any, any instruction barriers.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Thank you. Discuss town offices and transfer business hours for the day after Thanksgiving. So, in the past, I know that we've done town offices, they could use their personal time or vacation time to take the half-day off, so, but I'm not sure what we do at transfer station. Did you find out?
The transfer station was going to be, is going to be closed. No, actually, I take it back, the transfer station's closed on Friday, Sunday morning.
Okay.
It opens Saturday, Sunday, so it's already closed, so that's not even an issue.
Okay, so, just take, so I need to, I need to know what the board's pleasure is for allowing town offices to close the day after Thanksgiving by using personal or vacation time?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm going to turn this part over to discuss credit cards with the treasurer-collector, Jessica Thomas. As you know, the board met with Jessica a couple of times, but, again, it's one of those things that, you know, a changeover in town administrators. So, David was gracious enough to work with Jessica, and what do you have?
At our department head meeting about a week and a half ago, we addressed a whole bunch of issues that were still out there, and one of the ones that came up was having credit card readers swipes in the town hall, particularly with the collector, the town clerk, and also potentially looking at the land, not the landfill, but the transfer station. I know that the treasurer-collector and the town clerk are very much in favor of it. The fees that are associated with using the service, from what I hear, a lot of people come in, they get there, and then they have to go to the ATM to get money. This is a convenience kind of thing, the fees are passed on to the customer. It's on a sliding scale based upon how much the transaction is for. They are the same exact fees that we currently charge online for online payments, so there's absolutely nothing different there. Unibank is the bank that we use currently. It's going to be the same bank that we're going to use to do the readers. They'll provide the readers, they'll do all the setup in terms of the screens, and there's a lot of interest in getting this done.
And how much is the rental, monthly rentals for the swipe machines?
As far as I know, the swipe machines are free, they're making the money off the fees.
Off the fees.
Because that was a question that we had before, was there any, any fees for the town involved?
I don't believe that there are, but I can check and get back to you on that. I'd like to get going on it, but...
And we're trying to make the town a single-point payer, so, like, the entire town hall at least should go through the collector-treasurer's office. Obviously, the transfer station can't. Is anything else, are you looking at anywhere else, the fire station, police station? What do they currently have? I know there's fees that get paid there, do they already have something in place?
I don't believe that they do, but I could check on that also. I was just under the impression from our discussion at the department head meeting, the firing the police chief about there, they didn't mention that they had any fees that they transacted, other than the three, and even the landfill, we would need some kind of an internet connection in order to allow people to swipe their card and pay, you know, the fee.
Do they only do internet, they don't do telephone?
I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's telephone there.
Well, they can do it off of their...
You can do it off an internet connection, the swipe thing. You're going to pay a charge for that.
And they can't get a swipe reader off their phone, correct, and use data? A card reader?
You can get a card reader for your phone, but once again, it's not going to be the same service as Unibank is offering. The trans, the fees are going to be charged to the town, not to the revenue.
All right, then why don't we just start off with just allowing town hall to do it, and see how we go from there? And then, if all things work out, then we can, we can look into doing it at the... I know the transfer station is really one that really needs it.
It really is.
Because it would clean up a lot of stuff, like, we wouldn't be handling money over there.
No cash, if you checked.
Cash, right. So, I know that that's, I mean, that is very important that we get that done, but why don't we start off with town hall, see how that works, and then, within the next three months, try to get that done for, I think, I think transfer will kind of slow down during the, during the winter months, and then, so we can get something going by spring, then we should be all set, okay?
The other place I'd like to have, look into is the boat ramp in East Free Town.
Actually, that was also mentioned.
Because we charge fees there, if we had one of those, like, down the gate, it's one pay station, you do it, one transaction there, you put your sticker for the transaction on the windshield, and you're good.
We are also...
On the boat ramp.
I'll tell you, on the boat ramp, Derek and I are looking into a mechanism where we could, either a kiosk, I'm not real keen on a kiosk, because then somebody has to go and check it, relatively regularly during the day, or during the time period. I read an article where Swansea was setting up a new system, and I did advise Derek, and he told me we got to look into it, and that, you know, when he gets a chance, how they're doing it. And ideally, it would be somewhere where there'd be like a gate, where you would, you know, pay, either pay at the gate, or where you would have a slip to use the gate, so a gate would open, and then you could go and leave your boat, and then come out and park, something in that system. So, we're looking at that, and it was even suggested that similar thing might be appropriate for the town beach, but, so, stay tuned, I guess.
All right. I know that Carlton did a lot of work with that, so he has, on the kiosk part of it, so he has all that information.
It's just that I'm not real keen on a kiosk, and then you have to have somebody go to the site.
Patrol the lot.
Yeah, you have to have somebody stop by.
And then, so, is it defeating the purpose of, well, not defeating, but you have to have an employee involved in that, so I was hoping we'd maybe get something that would be a little bit more, if you only go and check.
All right.
Fully automated, I guess.
Fully, really fully automated.
All right, so, we'll stay tuned to that.
Okay. Keep you posted.
Thanks. All right, so, do you need a motion? Do you want a motion regarding going, okay? So, the board want to make a motion to move forward with the credit cards for the town hall?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Teach you two.
Okay. Discuss and approve all the snow file contracts for 2017, 2018. Let me just say that this is the first year in a very long time, that it was relatively quiet, right, Tim?
Until the very last one, there was really no major questions or issues at all.
I think you did all the heavy lifting last year.
I think so, and I think that we got it all settled in the contract, even though there was just one little question about it, seems the answer was there, and we were fine with that, so, we need a motion to approve all the contracts. And I don't need to say them all, do I?
No.
Okay, thank you.
As listed.
As listed.
As listed in the, on the agenda, but we're all set, ready to go.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have enough, have we heard from the highway survey that we have enough of this year?
Yes, he said there's actually somebody who's probably going to have to turn away, because he has too many.
Right.
We did a really good job then.
We did. Some of it was the insurance last year, and when the commercial plates kick in, so, I think that's why it was such a delay last year.
Yeah, it's just a lot of nonsense, but it worked. See, I think we have room for one more. Review and consider the October nineteenth, 2017, open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins, and discuss proposed response.
In the response, there was a date error that needs to be corrected. As soon as I can find it, I will tell you. The reference, most of the response is referencing the September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth posting, but the attorney wrote up in the second paragraph, "Original notice was received by the town clerk at three twenty-seven PM on October twenty-eighth, and posted that afternoon." That should be September twenty-eighth, and posted that afternoon. The amended post, the amended notice was similarly received by the town clerk at eleven twenty-one AM on September twenty-ninth, Friday, which is the next day. So, that was the only recommended change that I would have...
Are you sure?
The rest of, it was, September twentieth was the original posting. The amended posting was posted on the twenty-ninth for a Tuesday meeting, which is still outside the forty-eight hours, but the, that second paragraph references an October twenty-eighth posting, which was a month later. It's, that it was only written on October twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Should be like the third, third sentence.
I get nervous about changing lawyers' verbiage.
If we're going to do a response, I'm sure that'll be an issue if it's not the correct date.
All right. Is everybody all right with that, except for the change in date?
Sure.
Okay, do you have a motion to send that forward?
I'll make the motion to send that forward.
I'll second.
With the change?
Change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so everyone knows, I did go to a seminar last, last Monday on the opening meeting law, and this individual was there, and he was advised on the actual operation of the amended agendas and what they have to do, so. It was a little crestfallen, but it was advised.
We're not in trouble, what happened was we amended, we amended, or we, our office amended the notification for our meeting, and on the bottom, she didn't put amended version, or amended blah blah blah, and he thought that that needed to be on there. It does not need to be on there, so, that's why we're sending him a very nice response through our attorneys, and this individual has used our attorneys, or we have used our attorneys to combat this individual on several occasions.
Unfortunately, petty things like this cost the town $300 an hour for a town attorney to write this letter and rebut this, these, these...
We had about, what, seven of them?
Oh, yeah, and we're not the only community. All the communities around us have the same individual, the problem's the same individual.
Same person?
Same person.
Same person.
Same person, yeah. So, it's not, it's not a local person either, it's somebody that lives...
Across a bridge.
Few towns away. Everybody needs a hot.
All right, right now, the board is going to go into executive session. We will reopen and come back out here, but right now, we're going to, just the three of us, and Tim will go upstairs, you guys can relax here. So, entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Excel Recycling versus Lisa Pacico, Robert Joes, and Charles Sullivan, individually and as members of the Free Town Board.
So, move.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second for purposes of closing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Joes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pacico.
And with the record reflect that I will... And with the record reflect that I will be refusing myself from being part of this session.
It won't, I promise you, it's not gonna be long.
Are you gonna stay down?
To regular session and the next thing on our agenda is discuss and approve website, town website as official posting location for meeting notices and public hearings in accordance with the new open meeting law regulations as submitted by Jackie Brown.
I had a question about that, can we still, according to the new regulations, it has to be near the clerk's office, but viewable twenty four hours a day. The, currently we post some things on the door, on the glass door. A, does that cover us, not that I'm saying we shouldn't post online, I think we should, but does that also cover us if the online website goes down for extended period of time? We maintain posting it on the door so it can see youable twenty four hours a day, anybody wants to go down there and deal with it?
I don't have any other web access.
The only information I got from virtual town hall is that they've never had an outage of more than six hours. We've been with them since, I think it was twenty thirteen and they existed well before us, so they've not had that issue.
But do we have access to that site without going through the town computer system, because we've had outages of weeks.
Yeah, the website's not hosted anything within, in the town.
So you can access it from, not through the town website?
So even while we didn't have internet last Monday, the website was still up and running. I was checking it hourly on my phone.
My, my point, or what I, I'm looking, Bob, is it's supposed to be twenty four hours a day. I'd hate to see it where we have to cancel meetings because we're, you know, a couple of minutes more than six hours or something like that. When I was at the meeting last week, I was at the seminar, they did also, there's a possibility having suggestion of having some type of a poster outside the building. Where you, basically what's in the hallway there, which you could have outside.
Like a marquee?
Yeah, or, you know, basically what's built. Oh, in town hall could be placed outside town hall.
Yeah, so let's, let's put that on the, as a warrant article, unless we have money in the capital, in our capital improvement budget right now for town offices. If we can get one of those things and put it right outside town hall, that would be perfect.
The clerk could have the key, she opens it up, puts new ones in, locks it back up.
It wouldn't be very, I mean.
It could be, it could be pretty expensive.
Well, I'm thinking of something that's basically just like one by four sides, plywood back.
Are you gonna make it for us and donate it to the town?
He is very handy.
It wouldn't be, bring your medicine cabinet down, Charles. Yeah, but, and, no, seriously.
No, I get it.
Put it on, like a pressure treated.
A lot of the restaurants, you go to the nice restaurant, it has the menu right there, it's a lock and key type thing.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Just something like that.
Waterproof, it's.
Yeah.
We could actually place it on town hall, it doesn't have to be standalone, we could place it right on town hall.
That's what I meant, like a restaurant, right on town hall. Something that's viewable though, because some people don't have computers.
But I also think that there are a lot of people that do have computers and I'm not gonna drive to town hall to check, but I would certainly go online to check.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So I think doing both and then, you know.
Then we don't have an issue at all.
I know that George has also spoken about, you know, getting people more involved and how do you get the word out, so this is just another way to say that the word is out and here it is, so. Anyway, what's, first, David, can you look into, into that unless Charlie's gonna build it for us? If Charlie's gonna build it, then we don't need to look into it, but certainly if.
But it wouldn't be, it's not gonna be, it wouldn't be much.
I think we have a carpenter on the payroll, well, we can go with.
Alright, so we're, we're in pleasure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we also, we posted online twenty four hours a day and also posted currently the way we are now on the door, but when, if we do proceed with marquee and a marquee types that up.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, approve on board of selectmen's minutes from October sixteenth, nineteenth, twenty third and seconds.
I didn't have any problems with the minutes, so I'll make the motion to endorse.
The only thing if I can do, I just wanna make sure that they reflect that I did not enter into the executive sessions. They usually have the attendance, but Tim, if you could just, that would be the only thing that I would.
I'll amend my motion to reflect the change.
Yeah, that's really important, Charlie.
And one, you were actually absent at one of the meetings because it was, it solely dealt with the legal matter, the executive session.
Alright, a motion and a second with the changes, any, for the discussion. Hearing on all in favor, so move by, by aye. Signed contract for purchase of police cruiser tablets as submitted by Chief Abbott, is he coming in?
I didn't speak to him today.
So do we have that contract?
Yes.
It's actually on, oh, the actual physical.
Should be in the signature folder, no?
Yep.
I, I have no.
It's the same contract as it was last.
Yeah, we bought a couple last year, I think it was, we started the upgrade process. I also don't know if this is to replace those or if it's.
I don't either, and then I.
Just two new ones, so.
Just a supplement, add a couple more?
Yeah, replacing the units they already had with newer updates.
Now, do these, maybe you know, maybe you don't know, when we get the new cruisers, do we just unbolt them from there and bolt them into the, just like the old M D Ts or?
Right, they're actually, basically take them out.
Oh, so they're not even mounted?
Right, there's a mount for them, but they're attached, you take them out.
But the unit specific, cruiser specific?
Alright, but then. But these are from the grants, correct?
Right.
Right?
Right, it's.
Cause we got seventeen thousand nine fifteen in grant money in order to purchase those, so I just wanna make sure this is not coming over the.
I didn't see that.
Contract for purchase of cruiser tablets funded by nine one one grant.
Okay.
Perfect.
Oh yeah, I was actually on page, this wasn't reading.
That's what I wanted to know.
Background funding source.
Alright.
Make motion to endorse the contract.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Alright, and David, I'm gonna turn it over to you, sign Southeastern Serpeds Open Space Land Contract.
Okay, there's number one, I wanted the board to know that I endorsed the contract between the town and Serped about two or three weeks ago, I wasn't sure at that point. It had me down as the administrator and I assumed that that would be okay to do that, so I'm letting you know I did that. The contract now between the town and the state, which is the funding agency, is this contract that I'm referencing here. And once again, it's between the town administrator, the town administrator is listed as the signatory. So I didn't wanna sign it without having the board at least acknowledge the fact that I'm the signatory on the contract.
So David and I were going back and forth today, because we were like, you know, like usually the board has to enter into contracts and, but I think that clearly if we, we have endorsed something, like, like for instance, the credit card thing, right? So we've already endorsed that, so for him to sign off on something like that is, that's what he should be doing, not wait two weeks until we meet again to sign something. So I think that if, and if he just lets the board know prior to signing something, like I'm gonna sign this, if any of us haven't a problem like saying, no, we think we should wait on that, then he'll wait. But I think that it, it would be dumb, sorry, it's too simple, dummly stated, but. For him to wait two weeks for us to meet to sign something that we either A are in agreement with or B have already endorsed, so I think that that's fine, thank you. And now we can turn that right over to the town administrator's report.
Okay, first thing I have is the board did receive a letter from the Freetown Police Union by Sergeant Ashley requesting to start collective bargaining. It's my intention next meeting to have an executive session with the board to start talking about bargaining issues and beginning to discuss some dates for, at least for the initial meetings. The second thing is the transfer station is going to be closed on Saturday, Veterans Day. We did take a look at the contract, the contract calls, actually calls out the fact that they, they can be off on Saturday. I had made a request that they take Friday off instead because it's less busy. The membership wanted to have the Saturday off, so they declined that offer, just to let the board know that, that the transfer station will be closed on Saturday, Veterans Day.
Can we get that noted on Facebook and the town website too, please?
Posted on this afternoon.
I met with Scott Preventer of the Department of Conservation and Recreation regarding proprietor's way, the conservation project. They're hoping to close on the large parcels in the spring for a total of five hundred and nine acres. The town also owns a hundred and twenty acres that is conservation land in that same area. There are a whole bunch of little pieces of property that had title that wasn't very good, so they're not gonna make any effort to get those parcels cleared. But the ones that, you know, they had good title with, including us, they want to, they're looking at having the parking lot, that the first two parcels coming into the property on Chase Road. They're gonna put together an offer and I'm gonna present it to the board. One, with the building being taken down and the other with the building standing, because there's concerns about the building.
Correct me if I'm wrong, having, we've been over this though with the hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand, they made an initial offer of two hundred thousand and then because of the building, they reduced it to one fifty? I think that even went to town meeting.
Yeah, it was at town meeting, yep.
To go ahead with the sale, so.
Alright.
I don't know if there's something they've changed since then.
Well, he was under the impression they were gonna make an offer and he actually gave me a couple of figures that weren't a hundred and fifty and.
I believe the original was two hundred and they lowered it to one fifty because they're, because of the building.
Alright, that's.
Look at the warrant article and see how it was worded, I believe it was at the June town meeting, the annual town meeting, so if you look at that warrant article, you should be able to see how it was worded and you can take that up with them. Also, I'm sure it's in the minutes too, I didn't even think about that, but yeah.
Might have been a special, Tony, something might have been a special.
Yeah, well, either one of them is June, so.
But they're definitely interested in acquiring those properties.
Sounds like they're still negotiating.
Yes, they are, and hopefully we'll.
See, you change a new town administrator and you get new negotiations.
Lower office.
I don't know, that's a good thing.
The other thing is the lots they're not gonna take, are they in tax default, are they still?
They're, I believe that they were taxed title, but they couldn't.
They can't find who they belong to.
Just straight to the tax title.
He said there were a bunch of tiny lots, the larger lots they didn't have any problem with and the ones they really want, they have a clear title, including the two lots in the front. The board, I do want the board to know that we're meeting with our legislative delegation on November twenty first at ten A M. That's a different date than was originally suggested and.
Ten, I thought it was nine.
You might wanna mark your calendars.
Here or your office?
I believe it's the town hall.
Did we get a confirmation of that? There are a lot of people, I think Ellie said there's about ten people, so we might want to consider somewhere else.
Yes, is anything going on here?
I can find out tomorrow.
Alright, find out and then if so, we can meet here instead of town hall.
Are we gonna have an agenda for that meeting? Is there gonna be certain things we wanna discuss with them or is it just an informational meeting?
There's probably some things that we as a board might wanna think about talking to them about. If so, I'd pass it over to Tim or David and let them put an agenda together, but usually we just get updates on where we are.
No, I just, there's some hot button issues going right now that we, maybe wanna have some about delegation way in.
Okay, perfect, then can you send them over to Tim and then, so you put them on the agenda and then, yeah, and then David can review it and we can go forward.
The regional school committee meeting on Wednesday evening, the number A two thousand seventeen, which I'm gonna attend because there is going to be an executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategy for the upcoming negotiations at the school.
Do you have the contracts, the current contracts for those?
I believe that we do, Tim has been chasing that, I know with the police and.
No, I'm just saying the school.
The schools, I don't have those.
See what's in there.
We've been tracking down all our neighbor communities' contracts in town hall, police fire. We did receive a letter from the Assana Bay Shores Association to donate four marshlands for open space. The land was listed as unbuildable. We also have a recommendation letter from Kevin Desmaris from Chairman Conn's Comm to recommend that the board accept these parcels. There is a signature page that was attached to their letter and by voting to endorse it, it will be an acceptance of the land by the town.
I'll make a motion that we endorse the acceptance and turn the land over to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
We did receive a site plan review form L, oh, do you want it, I'm sorry.
No, I just said.
Well, there was some talk about making sure that the name of Colette and Dasko DeFeo were mentioned. There, Colette DeFeo is still on Cliff Drive and she's the longest standing board member, she's been on the board since nineteen sixty. So I didn't know if that was something we could just have noted that, you know, the Assana Bay Shores, you know, thanks Colette and Dasko DeFeo and just have it somewhere in the scheme of things. I was saying sometime, maybe in the spring, we'll go down and have a cake and take some pictures and.
I'll make a motion that we send a letter thanking the Assana Bay Shores Association and specifically Mr. Leo for the granting of the land.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Absolutely, thank you.
We did receive in a site plan review form L for the Riverfront Business Park, it's on file in the Selectmen's Office if anyone wants to take a look at that. Out of the department meeting, a couple of other issues came up, one is about the Vadar software, which is our accounting software. I've been working with the town clerk, our intention is to move the software to the cloud, right now it's on the server, one of the servers down. The, the people who need to use the software can't, you know, from my understanding, it's been down quite a bit, so. What it does is basically allows them to work from anywhere really, over the internet versus off of the server. It also allows some of the Fox site departments, such as the Council on A, the Police Department, to go in and really take a look at their reports and check balances and do the things that they should be able to do without any kind of obstacles in their way, so I've already started talking to Vadar, Kim and I are planning on getting that done hopefully within the next month or so. I've been working with the Board of Health on the dumpsters, the plan there, I talked to the chairman of the Board of Health regarding dumpsters and his discussion with Derek. The plan is to have five large, the five large item dumpsters repaired initially. It takes three weeks for the dumpsters to be repaired, so we're gonna do one at a time and we're gonna have to hire a flatbed to transport them. The other issue that came up at the department head meeting was a lean tube for all of the gas tanks at the Highway Barn. The feeling among all the department heads was that, you know, the town had spent a substantial, made a substantial investment in getting the new pumps and they're electronically and computer driven. And exposed them basically to the water, rain, heat, cold, the cold you can't do anything with, but the heat is a big problem, you know, with computers and heat and having the sun beating down on it. I've got a quote for nineteen hundred dollars from the gentleman stealing the windows in the building next door and he could start doing that work fairly soon, so I'm gonna authorize him to do that. I processed a P O for, if the board desires not to do that, I can pull the P O back, but I wanna see, there's a real strong interest in seeing those pumps be protected.
Does the manufacturer of the system have a CANB option that was?
I asked about, there's, they had said Chuck and Scott, when I was talking to them, they, they said that there's four posts there. So I guess it's, it's gonna be fairly easy to construct the roof, it's gonna be some kind of slant roof, sort of protects the sides, and. I could check into that, if you think that's viable.
Some of those come with a, you can up option the, when you buy it originally, it comes as a unit, and you can add options to it, and I didn't know if there was a CANB option that was just a bolt-on CANB option, that might be cheaper and easier to. It probably is.
I was gonna say fifteen hundred dollars is actually pretty cheap for.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm moving forward with that. For the next meeting, we have our tax classification hearing on. I'm hoping we have one candidate for the Cable Advisory Committee. I'm gonna ask the board to hold up, appointing him. We're gonna redouble our efforts and hopefully get another couple of applicants in and do it all in one shot. The next department head meeting is gonna be on December sixth, and I'm planning a financial team meeting on, at some point this month, later in the month. Today, I met with the Council on Aging, and it was a nice meeting, I met the membership of the council, and they were basically went over some of the projects that they're working on, and I'm hoping that I'm gonna be able to help them get the things done that they need to get done, so.
Any questions? All set, thank you so much. Alright, I will turn it over to.
Personnel.
Personnel. Charlie's laughing.
You sure you don't have anything to tell?
You sure?
Personnel, police chief, you're up on the personnel, you have something on here for a new officer?
Yeah, so Joseph Cowing came on board earlier as an auxiliary police officer, in addition to several others. Joseph has now completed his auxiliary police training satisfactorily, so we're recommending that he be elevated to a reserve position at this time.
He's successfully completed Reserve Academy?
Yes, psychological, pat, Reserve Academy, background investigation.
Pat's done good. And he had the right, how many hours is it for volunteer?
It's about four hundred hours.
So you put a good, good amount of time, just one personal time into doing this.
Yeah, so all volunteer.
Excellent. So I have a certificate of appointment for Joseph P. Cowing, Freetown resident for, oh, that's not it. Well, reserve police officer term expires June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, effective October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a change of status form for same officer Joseph Cowing from auxiliary, from the police department, from auxiliary officer to voluntary, to reserve police officer, one, step one probationary, hourly rate of seventeen eighty-nine, this is a new hire.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
You have something else from Mr. Cowing, chief?
Yes.
We had a request to appoint him as a trainee, a signal operator?
Signal operator. Okay, I have a request to appoint him as a trainee signal operator. Motion to endorse a, I'm looking for a motion to endorse a certificate of employment for Joseph P. Cowing, signal operator, trainee, part-time, term expires June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, effective October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a change of status form for Joseph P. Cowing, this is a new hire, job, part-time signal operator, trainee, hourly rate of fourteen forty-three, again, this is a new hire. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. Chief, these are two different pay rates, or the same pay rate? These are two different pay rates?
Well, the pay rate, if we look at, on the police side, it would go from zero, obviously, as an auxiliary volunteer, to the step one, level one probationary reserve officer. Then, as a wholly separate department, we have the communications department, and he would go from zero, obviously civilian, to whatever the trainee's rate of pay was, signal operator training.
And there's no issue with him receiving two different pays from the same type thing to monitor?
No, we just have to monitor, you know, FLSA overtime, so, so we're, we're cognizant of that, we keep an eye on that.
Make that motion.
The motion was made and seconded, it was discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I have Mr. Wilber, he's sent a letter in for the Cable Advisory Council, but the town administrator is asking us to hold, is that correct?
Just two weeks, I'll put it back on, and we'll.
I'll make a motion to table that, or?
For two weeks.
Second, we don't have to do that, but, okay.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Finally, Vincent, Di, um, Di Olivera has sent a letter to the board, I'm writing to request an unpaid leave from January first, two thousand eighteen, until April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. If this is not allowed, please accept my letter of resignation. He's a van driver with the COA currently, he's having, I believe, a procedure done, and he won't be able to drive for, what is it, four months? What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion that we give, grant him the, leave of absence, January one to, January three.
Second, we do.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? As long as, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, you can, I'm gonna ask a question, too. I know that they were shorthanded on van drivers, where do they stand right now?
They did pick up a second part-time, so.
Now you'll be short again.
Not really, I, I think, I was talking to Barbara about it, she figures that two part-timers we got will take over for whatever Vinny was gonna drive.
Okay.
And we have another one that does two days a week.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure, do you have to pick up another part-timer, or like a substitute, but?
Barbara thinks we're good.
We're good, okay.
And he's volunteer, correct? No, he's not volunteer, there you go. Is he commercial, is he a commercial operator?
I don't know what the deal is, I mean, they meet all the state regulations, all four of them, the training and this and that, so.
I just wanna make sure we, he still meets whatever requirements he is required to have when he comes back.
I'm thinking a couple, three months ago, they might have done something to give him another two years.
Medical card?
The whole training deal, I don't know the specifics, but I, I seem to recall, they, they had everybody do it for a two-year deal, so they'd be all on the same schedule.
So I have a motion made and seconded to allow the, Mr. Di Olivera, the January first, two thousand eighteen, to April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, unpaid leave. Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Kimberly Fails, when I thought that was it. Certificate of appointment for Kimberly Fails, just to re-sign her contract. Town account term expires June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, effective November first, two thousand seventeen. This is certificate of appointment.
Yeah, we just didn't, we.
Re-signed the contract, we didn't, we didn't reappoint her.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kimberly Fails, November first, twenty seventeen, to June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Fails also sent a letter to town, to the Board of Selectmen personnel. As of October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, I have unused sick time of fifty hour, fifty point two-five hours. I respectfully request the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the carryforward of these hours into the next employment cycle that begins November first, two thousand seventeen, and runs through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The memorandum of agreement that extends the employment agreement of September twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, allows for the carryover sick time up to thirty days or two hundred and seventy hours. Need a motion to approve and not approve with the board's pleasure?
What is she, what is her current hours right now? Do we know?
Current number of sick hours?
Yeah.
I believe they, I have unused sick time of fifty hours, fifty point.
Two-five hours.
Total.
Unused.
Total unused.
Right now.
Right.
Okay.
She's not here.
Right.
So, but the contract allows for up to thirty.
Right, I didn't know where she was, I didn't know.
She's only asking to carry over the fifty point two-five.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Make the motion to allow the carryover?
For the fifty point two-five hours?
Right.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you, can you find out exactly how many total hours she has on the books right now? Thank you.
Health department appointment, Freetown, I have a, I have a letter from.
Executive.
Yeah, no, I was trying to write the. Yeah, the town seal. Freetown Selectmen, I am writing to inform you that my employment status has changed in effect of October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, will no longer be able to assist your town with health reg, related inspections and other departmental matters. It has been a pleasure to serve you, your needs throughout the past several years. I am confident in the recent health agent you have chosen and think you will service your community appropriately and effectively. James Aguirre, Building Commissioner. Actually, he was our assistant health agent. Need a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll make the motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Kimberly sent a letter.
I have, I talked to Derek, and he's gonna talk to a couple of the neighboring communities to see if somebody would be willing, be willing to serve as a backup for vacations and sick days and things like that.
Thank you.
Think we sent him a letter, Tim, thanking him for his service. Board of Selectmen, to the Honorable Board of Selectmen, the Cemetery Commission would like to commend Mark Ardet for the fine job he has done painting the new shed at the Sonnet Burial Ground through the cooperation of the Building Department. Mr. Ardet was allowed time to paint the shed during October, as the work has not gone unnoticed, and has already resulted in compliments from visitors. Submitted by sincerely Mike McHugh, Chairman, Freetown Cemetery Commission.
I'll make a motion to put this letter in his personnel folder.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's it for personnel.
And, any new business? Okay, just, the only new business I have is just to let everybody know that the test pits went very well the other day at the site for the police station, so at our next meeting, we'll be moving right along.
What is it, I can't remember?
They wanted to get something done, so I, like formally written out before we have another meeting, is it next week, content?
Yeah, so the formal analysis of the soil and some other elements won't be done for a week or two. But preliminarily, as the chairperson said, it's indicated that a structure could be built over there. Additionally, the perk rate was a passing rate as well.
So when's the meeting scheduled, do you know when the meeting's scheduled for, Michael?
I think we're deferring the meeting until after we get the technical data.
Still nothing set in stone, right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, we're going back into executive session.
We have another executive session?
Right? You thought you were done?
Thought I was done. They pulled me back in. Every time you think I'm out, they pull me back in.
Okay, so now I have a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Please Chief Carlton E. Abbott, Junior, and not to come back out into open session.
Make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Joe's?
Yes.
And Ms. Pacico, yes.